All right, call this regular meeting in Grand Forks City Council to order. First item with business is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, Councilor Corlech? Second item, Councilor Crock. All those in favor. And we have three sets a minute. July 15th, regular meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Councilor Corlech, Councilor Thompson, all those in favor. July 15th, public hearing minutes and the special going camera minutes. Let's do two together there. Motion to adopt those two minutes. Councilor Studley, second item, Councilor Corlech. All those in favor. No registered petitions and delegations. We're down to council reports and we will begin with Councilor Thompson's report.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. I participated in council strategic party session on July 16th facilitated by Kevin Ramsey. This was a very interactive process that included our CAO Diane Heinrich and our CEO Daniel Drexler. While the plan has not yet been finalized, I believe that it will be one that is achievable and that will allow us to move forward for the next three years. On July 22nd, and at the invitation of the DBA Downtown Business Association, I attended the first meeting of the Discover Grand Forks Committee as an observer. Those attending volunteered to serve on several committees to foster any of the recommendations brought forward during Roger Brooks' workshop. It is so exciting to see the enthusiasm of both the business and resident community working together to develop plans that will make our city inviting to both tourists and potential investors. As council is aware, I am interested in arranging a meeting with our medical community to discuss any issues that they may have that we might be able to bring to the attention of the Ministry of Health and the Interior Health Authority. I have been made aware that the appropriate way to make this request is formally by sending a letter and accordingly I am requesting council's permission to do so. The DBA held their monthly meeting on July 30th. Agenda items included a report on the successful first meeting of the Discover Grand Forks Committee, the success of placing plants and seeding outside some businesses, and a recap of party in the street, and the approval of a new administrator of the DBA Facebook page. So at this time, I don't know if I need to do it formally by motion or if I...
Let's do it by motion.
I would like the authority to make a request to the medical community for a meeting.
To discuss health issues and...
Well, to discuss issues that they may want us to bring forward as lobbyists at the UBCM with the Ministry of Health and/or the Interior Health Authority.
So, anything to do with the whole community issue?
Absolutely.
And, seconded for that motion, Councilor Corlech. Any further discussion? All those in favor.
Thank you.
And Councilor Moeslin.
Yes. Thanks, Your Worship. Phew, okay. Once again, I remind the crowd that I actually wrote this six days before this meeting and two days before I saw the agenda. Okay, now that I see, GFSS advisory group has informed to regret the haste with which council instructed staff to enforce city zoning violence on June 24th. In our, at our senior committee of the whole meeting this morning, we certainly heard support from both sides of this argument and a lot of the speakers really endorsed the idea of, now that we have this committee, let's give them the time to do the work and let's give them, you know, the space and patience to come up with recommendations so that we can, you know, better hear from a representation of those people who have the responsibility, whether it's interior health or the police, to deal with the social services in our community. I believe, I think, at this point, it is up to the council and the community to either designate a zone or approve a location. It makes no sense to deny these services a location. The Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group meets tomorrow at 1:00 at the RDK building to discuss the way forward on this social challenge. That is a public meeting, by the way. I'm hoping the press will be there. Councilor Corlech and Mayor Taylor will be there. I'm hopeful that they are going to make some clear recommendations to council in a timely way. Another DMAF plan. In, back in September 2018, the previous council set a course for the application of the DMAF grant. For many months now, we have been caught in a limbo waiting to hear about that grant application. Now that we know what the province and the federal government are going to pay for it, it's time to get down to the details and begin to steer these works towards the benefit of all our residents. Earlier today, we heard from Graham Watt about the take-up of the city's offer of in-kind help. Now, this does not read quite accurately. It seems that many residents would rather take a pre-flood buyout than participate with any in-kind offerings of the city. I must correct that, Mayor. There was, Mr. Watt did point out to us, some good interest in the in-kind options that were presented to people in, I believe, a series of five meetings over the last couple of weeks that he led. And I'm hoping that everybody on that buyout list is going to get a chance to participate in these meetings. I don't know if this, so I'm just putting this out there, maybe it's not necessary. Move to the city of Grand Forks formally requesting provincial government grant out additional funds for expropriated properties at a pre-flood value. Now, is there any comment on that rather than... My thinking was is that people are requesting that we do that. I believe that we have done that through the grant application and that we are continuing to do that. Mr. Watt referred to that, that he's continuing going to the province looking for pre-flood buyouts. The concern, of course, within that community is not only them and their financial bottom line, but also the setting of a precedent that would perhaps further protect homeowners in facing a disaster. Anyhow, I'm putting that out there as a possible motion if there's any discussion on it.
So you're making that motion looking for...
Well, how about if I move it, Mayor? I'll wait for a second or see how, what discussion happens. Is that okay?
Seconded, Councilor Zelinski. Discussion, Councilor Crock.
Yeah, there's no harm in asking again and again and again, like we've done in the past. So, another formal ask or maybe that ask could be at the UBCM or better yet, we sent a letter before so that we could maybe get a response. I basically know what the response is going to be, the same as it's been. But, can't fault for asking.
Councilor Thompson.
I think it's also the federal government that needs to step up to the plate. And so, I would move an amendment to your motion, Councilor Moeslin, is that we, our fund request both the provincial and federal governments to grant additional funds.
Should we accept that?
I would accept that if my seconded word is.
Okay, that's on the table as an amended motion. Councilor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question is, unless you want any definitions around how that lobbying will go, certain minister's letter now instead of meeting at UBCM or do you want to put any more definitions around that motion as far as how we will do that lobbying or we build it? It's a question.
Yes, my intent is, I did ask staff to make an appointment at UBCM with the minister involved with the DMAF grant. I would be hoping, you know, hoping besides the letter that we sent to also make that part of our, that request part of the 15-minute presentation that you get. And squeak the wheel once again.
So it's not a lobbying plan, but we are starting with at least its letters to the federal and provincial government and then we could decide if there's further action in detail we want to take. Motion is on the table. Any further comments? All those in favor. Carrie.
Thanks, Your Worship. We also discussed the flexibility of the DMAF grant this morning and what parts of it are, can we, can we change. Probably just as important, the timeline for it. As the, as the work plan gets pushed back, and they were told this morning that all construction of the dike around the downtown core as planned is going to be, not going to be possible. The prospect of a delayed project with increased costs, I believe, is a significant risk to the city. It may be time to rethink the original plan so the council can fulfill its duty to steward city lands for the future. We can live with the river without sacrificing, whoops, there's that word, one neighborhood for another, nor do we need to throw away over 11 hectares of developed and serviced city land at great expense. I do make this comments quite humbly because I know how hard any plan is going to be on the people of North Rockville. They've lost not just money, but homes, in some cases, homes that have been in the family for generations. They've been stuck in a limbo. They continue to be stuck in a limbo as the city sort, tries to sort it out. For these reasons, buyouts, I believe, should be voluntary and residential space should be preserved as much as possible. And I hopefully support that another DMAF plan to start a conversation with the community while alternatively it's forward. Now, my intent here is to finally put this whole issue to rest and to allow council to speak with one voice. The only way council speaks with one voice is if we vote on it. Because I assure council that I will support the decision of the majority and to the community as well. I believe we all will. But I would like, as this council, to have the opportunity to review that mandate of the DMAF project that was basically been the guiding point for this whole process and give this council a chance to review and endorse or change or whatever the DMAF project at the September 3rd meeting, a regular meeting. I'm hoping to do it in a timely way because I know that things are beginning to go into motion, that we do need to speak with one voice to the community. And my hope is that we do get a chance to look at it. Anyhow, I, once again, I'll make the motion, Your Worship. I'll look for a second or, there's no second or...
I believe it's already on the agenda for the third. Are we discussing it at that meeting on the third already?
Your Worship, I think it's a motion that Council Moeslin has in his report that's differentiates about the things that we have on our agenda. It's a little different from yours.
I'm seconded the motion.
Okay, and I've asked and it doesn't look like we're formalizing that operating, view the operating mandate. So your motion would be in line and if so passed by council, we'll expect it on the third.
I would like the opportunity, I would like the opportunity to debate this particular motion tonight.
Okay, well, the motion's on the floor. You're welcome to debate the motion. Councilor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I've been, what, also questioning the need to eliminate all the homes from North Rockville. And so, I want to thank Councilor Moeslin for putting this motion forward. And the way I'm reading it, and Councilor Moeslin, please correct me, it's, for me, this is saying, get along with the Dobson program as printed or there's room for questions on, on the projects and the process if this motion passes. Do I have that correct?
Yes, Councilor. The intent of the motion is that we go through those recommendations from the September 8th, 2018, you know, and review them and endorse them or modify them as so that we can hear from staff as we go through. There will be consequences, as we heard this morning, for any changes we make and associated risks. I know that staff is also planning to have a workshop on the issue and flood modeling that we requested at the end of August. But my hope is also that we do, the only way we get to speak with one voice is if we debate it. So that's the intent. Get to the point where we speak with one voice.
Bring it to a council's vote on the third, if possible. Councilor Thompson.
I'm going to speak against the motion simply because what I heard from the presentations today, if we start making any changes, significant changes or changes period, to how the grant monies are going to be used and expanded and start making changes, we run the risk of losing all of the funding and receiving nothing. I'm not prepared to take that risk. I understand and I hear where yourself and Councilor Zelinski are coming from, but I think this is kind of coming in after the fact and I think we need to move forward to, to continue to delay and defer, I think, could impede progress on, on projects that can be undertaken. So, I will not be supporting this motion.
Just backing it up, Cass, I'm not sure why that motion wouldn't fit into your expectation that there would be a clear direction forward, that we would be using that September 3rd to actually move forward with the DMAF plan.
My understanding is that, and perhaps Councilor Moeslin, correct me if I'm wrong, that it is your wish or your desire or whatever word we want to put in there, is to review and make changes to the actual projects that are included in the, in the grant application. You've expressed concerns about, about buying out all of North Rockville and you have made some suggestions about maybe leaving homes there or whatever. And again, if that is the intent, then we really and sincerely do run the risk of losing all of the, all of the grant money. I'm not prepared to take that risk.
Okay, Councilor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and maybe to staff a little clarification because I don't think I heard that. So my understanding is with the grant application, we have, if the first project that went forward was to raise the profile of Second Street to get it above those floodwaters, my understanding is we could engineer that, build a project, submit our request for funding, and we'd get funding for that. Is that correct or not?
I think we have to watch that some of the stuff that we're touching on within camera today as well, that we're cautious, that we respect that confidentiality.
Yes, so this is in the Dobson report that's in the, in the public domain and that's one of the projects is Second Street between the Second Street Bridge and 68th has got to be raised to a certain point. My understanding is with the grant application, we could go ahead with that project, complete the project, submit the bills, and we would get funding to complete that project. Am I correct in my understanding or not?
Yeah, no, I understand that. I think that that took clear path, or was it one project? Graham is here, let's hear what he has to say.
Are people get off in one second?
I don't know, ladders. Graham.
That's all attached. Thank you, sir. Dear the mayor, so, not speaking with full knowledge of all the possibilities and risks, I think the main issue is that we have not yet completed a contribution agreement with the federal and provincial government. We don't have any guarantee of any kind of funding delivery mechanism or anything until that contribution agreement is done. I think that there's quite a bit of work yet to do as a corporation to determine what the moving parts in there before we make commitments about what we can and can't spend at certain times in the grant. And so I think it's premature to comment at this time until we've got some more information, certainly on that, on those options. We do know that it's reimbursement based. We will probably be doing projects and putting in submissions at least on a quarterly basis and the cash flow would happen that way, but until we have a complete picture of what is fundable and how changes to any of those ideas are done, I think it's premature to make any commitments.
Councilor Zelinski.
Yeah, just for clarification again, so someone made a big flashy announcement, 53 million, and you're telling me we don't know if we can access that right now? Is that correct?
We are able to spend money as per the letter of intent going forward, but if we are planning to deviate at all from any of the program, the contribution agreement should be the place to do that, not independently of that process.
Okay, can we bring this back down to the simplicity of the motion on the floor? Is it reasonable that we review the operating mandate on September the 3rd, Graham? I mean, this is imposing a timeframe.
I don't think, Mr. Mayor, I don't think I can comment on that. I don't think I can make a commitment that, one way or another, this is a council decision. I can't make a recommendation on that.
There's nothing holding us up then going ahead with putting that on the agenda? We have been reviewing, this is not, not new. We've been in the process of reviewing the DMAF grant for the last several months.
Your Worship, maybe it might be more comfortable if we were to maybe do the workshop that we talked about, we never really finished, you know, what we needed to discuss, and I think an all-in-all workshop in a day that's not a council meeting would likely be the best to really hash out all the moving parts and then, then kind of go to this level if you feel you need to, because I think that there's still some unanswered questions that council is still waiting to get and I think that until the body of council is actually comfortable with how this is moving forward, I think that might be the step that council might want to direct.
Okay, so we're planning a workshop towards the end of August and it would be similar to what we had to interrupt today when we had to cut it short with our discussions. So I'm going to vote against the motion on the basis that it may be premature in terms of our movement forward here at this point until August, do we have this workshop and look in depth more of some of the incidentals that Council Moeslin was bringing up? Councilor Crock.
Yeah, I see, like it's review, but it says the operating mandate, so not 100% sure how we would do that if. The intent is that we revisit and look at revamping things, changing things, that type of thing. I don't know, from what I know from the beginning through to the end, some other information we received today, we're looking at flood model, we're looking at a lot of different things, but when the federal government looked at the application, they looked at it from a risk assessment point of view and that's why they said and agreed that there could be a buyout. Of course, they didn't provide money for it, but so it is quite complicated. My fear is that we just go back to square one and five years from now, we still haven't done anything. So I would want to see that workshop first and then if we want to try and retool it and not lose it, then, you know, maybe that's where it would, where it would come from and you could tweak it because there is the ability in the room to play with it a bit, just not change the whole thing.
Right, and I think Councilor Moeslin's intent here is that just not hang around until there's, you know, that we burn up slowly or that we get to a point where we make a decision. And I think I respect that, but I'm not sure that this motion is going to accomplish that and I'm urging you to wait till the August meeting and giving that August meeting enough time to call it a workshop.
Yes, Your Worship, the real intent is to make a public decision so the council can speak with one voice. Really, the details of what that decision, those decisions are, I wait, you know, with patience for, in the middle maybe a bit impatient, for the workshop in August. But I do believe that we do need to finally make it clear, this council, not the previous council. This council. Give the green light. Let's move forward. But I wrote this motion, Your Worship, I didn't know there was going to be a workshop at the end of August. I think that this motion might actually help that. Anyways, so I do, I, I'm going to, the motion is on the floor.
Do you withdraw?
I don't feel I need to withdraw, do I? I mean, I don't mind seeing, let it be noticed, even if it is defeated.
All right, are you ready for a call on that?
It's going to come around.
I just want to confirm it. We can always add it as a late item after the workshop and make public what, what the decisions or what, what as a council through the workshop, we're prepared to go forward for recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And Councilor Moeslin's not withdrawing yet, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And motion's defeated. So let's see that we make note of that and that we bring it forward after the August workshop.
Let people know. Okay, you have my last thing. Your Worship, is the Destination Grand Forks meeting on July 22nd is a council liaison. I'm now part of a subcommittee on promotion of trails. As part of that committee, I've been adding trails and routes to Trail Forks. Please, if you have a computer and you're on the internet, see if you can log on to Trail Forks and once there, check it out, maybe even log one of our trails. You can add photos or even GPS files if you've got them and so that we can, you know, add that to it. I do want to also congratulate the Downtown Business Association for the wonderful job. Our downtown looks beautiful. It really is a be- Our downtown looks beautiful. It really is a becoming place. And it's becoming more and more beautiful because of their imaginations and effort. Anyhow, this new association is next meeting on August nineteenth at six-thirty P.M. at the Station Pub. Congratulations, Catifest. Anyhow, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, a very brief report, and as you can tell, I'm frustrated, frustrated with the speed of things, knowing how slow government works. We only have four years to get some things done, and I think some of that was, should have a little more priority than others. Again, I'll voice it again, clear resolution by council for staff to bring forward definitions for zoning bylaw that never happened. Not very happy about that. And wondering why staff doesn't follow through with resolutions. But I also have on that report, looking for some information. I want to compliment Counselor Moslin in his format for his council comments. I hope you don't mind if I steal that format as far as discussion and issue and making a motion to it forward at BP. I appreciate the effort put into that, and I'm going to steal it, put it this way. So other than that, hopefully my questions do get asked in the future. And again, I posed another one just an hour or so ago, so hopefully we, as council, get some more clarity on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And a motion to accept council reports. Counselor Corlick? Counselor Thompson, if you have a vote. All those in favor? And the Regional District of Cudney Boundary, I'm going to report on a couple of themes here from the boundary economic development level. The community forests, we have a draft report, a work plan from Regional District, so they're moving ahead with this. We're looking at a fall workshop, which I think we should all try and attend, and that would look at things like why and how and what a community forest would look like, what is our expectation. So I think it's a real opportunity there to take part in that and begin to participate in a regional community forest. The Boundary Watershed Advisory Group has changed its name to the Kettle River Watershed Advisory Committee and are, at this point in time, setting up structures around that. We'll be looking for a representative from this council to sit on that. And these things are coming up, and I feel like as mayor, I should not be on all the committees. And so I'll be looking for someone with an interest in that water advisory committee. The other thing that we missed, the, well, the Trails Master Plan is going ahead. Counselor Moslin, you'll be happy to hear. We, Transit Services this year didn't run a deficit, so we're not faced with a last-minute monetary request. But also, we're not being active in terms of transit, and I'd like to see us take more responsibility in future on that. I'll report back on the next step with any meetings and see again if we can capture another counselor's interest in transit. A key part of a healthy community and one that I think at this point we have some ability to shape if we get involved. That's my report. And I'll answer any other questions on Regional District business. Hearing a motion to accept the Regional District report, Counselor Krog seconded. Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, we are down to fire department capital and operational budget reallocation. And I think that we have someone speaking to this?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got Acting Chief Siegler here with me. So with the process of the fire department review and some of the changes there and the WorkSafe BC requirements that we have to meet, ultimately, we have to do a couple changes in our budget. So I'm going to let Acting Chief Siegler here speak a little bit too.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Thank you for having me. So basically, what we're looking to do is take the proposed capital amount for eighty thousand dollars, use it to cover some of the expenses that we've had for the audit, WorkSafe BC, and then put the rest of it back into the operating accounts to cover other items that we've had, such as replacement of hose, PPE, other items like that, additional expenses this year.
Counselor, can we have this motion that we have in front of us to approve this removal of the eighty thousand dollars command vehicle and adding the twenty-seven thousand dollars for fire department equipment and fifty-three for other operating budgets items? Counselor Krog makes the motion, seconded by Counselor Corlick. Discussion, Counselor Thompson?
What was the source of funding for the command vehicle two?
Thanks to the mayor. This was originally a planned capital project that was happening on, for the third deputy chief. The vehicle was rather old and was scheduled for replacement. So it was a replacement through the capital budgeting process. So I know it's not ideal to take some capital and put it to operating.
I don't disagree with that. But what was the, was the source of funding from reserves?
I believe it was from fleet, but maybe Ms. Rhodes?
So I don't recall exactly which reserve, but it would have been from reserves.
So either the general budget, most likely, or the fleet budget.
Okay. Counselor Zelinski?
I have a question with capital operations also. So how is this affecting the bill we send over to the RDKB? Because I believe it is the operating cost that we grade everything on, and have they been notified that we're going to send them a bill?
Is that the case?
We haven't discussed it yet with the RDKB, but I believe Ms. Rhodes can answer the RDKB-related question.
Actually, I posed this question myself because I don't know without discussion with the RDKB whether they can cover these costs. So I think that discussion needs to be had with them.
Okay, so we have yet to have that discussion with the RDKB.
So what I'm hearing is we don't know what the contract for fire service with the RDKB is?
As it relates to this particular move. Is that correct?
I believe that capital portion is coming from city's capital. So this is now potentially partially operating funding and may impact the RDKB requisition.
Right. But again, because we're pulling it out of capital, it may not. Don't agree with that? I can see your head shaking.
Well, when you have review of workplace policies for ten grand, that's an operating cost that both should share.
So do we need to report back to council on the decision in terms of the shared cost of this, but let it pass tonight in terms of an adjustment and find out to share with Regional District?
Well, I would...
Counselor Thompson?
I would afford a motion to defer this to the September third meeting to give our staff and CFO in particular the opportunity to consult with Regional District with respect to cost sharing on any of these expenditures.
Okay, this is a motion to defer. Can we have a second or if not? Counselor Zelinski? As far as I know, we're not going to debate the deferral. Is that a rule? I think it is.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Motion to defer. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Go that motion to defer.
No, I don't think it's important. I just think we have to keep the proper processes.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes.
Okay. Next item of business is the MIA appointments here. I'm assuming Counselor Thompson, who has done this for many years, I hate to say how many, be our main delegate to Municipal Insurance Association and that we appoint the mayor and one other counselor. Is that the desire here? So myself and who? Would anyone like to volunteer for that position? I see some chat.
Counselor Zelinski can volunteer.
Counselor Zelinski volunteers?
Sure.
Okay, so that would be our choice here, and I'll have a motion on that to get it on the books. Counselor Corlick seconded. Counselor Studley. All those in favor? So that would be Counselor Thompson representing, and Counselor Zelinski and myself as second. Alternative. Thank you. Okay, the next item is basically a cleanup item in terms of the lots that we did purchase, A, B, C, D, and a decision as to where that funding would come from. The land reserves, so council determines the funds completed for the purchase. We fund the land sales reserve. Can I have that motion, Counselor Thompson? Counselor Corlick. All those in favor? And the second of that is to direct staff to include the changes in the five-year financial plan.
Oh, part of the same resolution?
You think so? But it's separate. I should have probably grouped it together. Yeah, okay, but it's separate now, so can I have that motion for number two? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corlick, all those in favor? Okay, we could have saved some time there. And the next item is interesting, and that council received this report for information and designate the properties along Market Avenue as a distinct geographical area entitled the Market District. Can I have this in one motion, Counselor Thompson? Seconded by Counselor Corlick. It's going to look suspicious if you can't second everything. Discussion on this. Counselor Krog?
Just a question. I know we can't ask the DBA because it's a business meeting, but has there, so I'll ask it to you. Has there been any pushback by anybody that's not in that geographic boundary?
You know, I see that we're just opening up that process. So by moving down this road, I think that the consultations and discussions with that group and the surrounding area are just beginning. So I'm suspecting at this point that that will play out in terms of future. Counselor Thompson?
As the counselors, or council liaison to the DBA, I believe that they have approached every business in the area and have received agreement that they all wish to be included.
Counselor Thompson or Krog?
Yeah, not wish to be included.
You don't object?
No, mad that they're not included.
I think what Counselor Krog is saying is the other merchants around the area that they're not necessarily...
Okay, here's the line. You can see the line flowing as somebody on the other side of that line saying, hey, why was the line drawn there? Why was it not included? That's the line.
I believe there was one local merchant that expressed concern that they weren't included.
Not allowed to talk.
No, just an odd. Thank you.
John?
I would say, Mr. Mayor, this is a great start to the project. We can down the line if we feel like we need to expand to Seventy-second or something like that, all the way encompassing.
I think that's the point here, the way it's...
Yeah, I just saw some buildings that happened.
Yeah, we will be having dialogue with that group surrounding and the group internal.
Okay.
All right, ready for this decision? If Counselor, the motion is on the table. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Wayfaring signs. This is a game, something we discussed this morning in terms of this being a fifty thousand dollar application for a grant, of which forty thousand would be paid for in the grant, and ten will become city cost. Can I have that motion to apply for the grant? Counselor Studley seconded. Counselor Thompson, discussion? All those in favor? Carrie? All right, we're down to strategies to increase affordable housing options in Grant Force. Now, this is the one that is three parts. We discussed again this morning in many of the whole. That is basically is moving us forward to, first of all, delegating the issuance of development permits for garden suites. And we had a good explanation of why that would be beneficial to all of us to have that streamlining of our decision-making process on garden suites. And the other is to direct staff to look at the financial feasibility of certain parts of city-initiated housing projects, moving forward with advertising and making the community aware of the opportunities that we're opening up for garden suites and small homes. And the final one is to waive the development and building permit fees for garden and secondary suites in the city. So let's do them separately. The first one would be the delegation of authority. Can I have a motion for that, Counselor Thompson? And secondly, Counselor Moslin. Discussion on this matter? Again, this will come back to us. It's not that these will be done without our knowledge, but if they do streamline operations. New discussion? All those in favor? Carrie? And the second part is that council directs staff under these one, two, and three directions to staff to look at the cost of that. I mean, assuming even at this point that waive the development and building permit fees would be something that would happen fairly quickly if we approve this tonight. The other things are work that staff is doing. Can I have a motion for motion number two? Counselor Corlick seconded by Counselor Studley. Discussion on this. Counselor Moslin?
We did make some corrections.
You did?
Of all the information in the brochures, I'm assuming, I'm sure, staff will make those corrections. Good, thank you, your worship.
And Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as previously stated, number two of those last three groups, or sorry, number one, again, until council has a discussion on what properties we have and what type of developments we see at those locations, I think going in for servicing costs might be a little premature. So I won't be supporting that part of the motion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure how they can go ahead without finding out what those costs would be, so I will support the motion. For your comment, actually, let's get this on the floor. We don't have a mover.
I'm sorry, were we doing it one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, so didn't we pass number one already?
We passed number one. We voted on it.
Is it number one or the head?
We passed the delegation to staff for the development in regards to gardens. Now, if council would like to break up the three individual pieces, that's doable. Currently, it's written as one motion, but we can change that. So if council would like to move, the councilary staff to the first one and the second and the third, I guess, three individual motions, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, and I'd like to keep them together again just to get the job done here. So I would ask for a motion to adopt or to move all three of those. I'm not seeing any hands jumping up. Do you want to break it down then? Let's go with number one.
I'll move number one, your worship.
Second or for number one?
I'll second number one.
Okay, Counselor Krog? So this is, again, to look at the feasibility and analyze what this is going to cost and look at if we... look at if we do the, if we're the initiator. Question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number two. This is advertising and communications. We found out that it was only one application for a lane house. And so obviously.
No. There's only one tiny home and no garden suite.
No garden suites. So we're not getting the message out there and making.
Everybody keeps telling me that, but.
The program was started like right before the flood is when the bylaw was passed. So there was not much communication that could have gone out up until now. So.
Okay. Let's see if we can make that happen then. So this is about education. Counselor Zelinski makes the motion, seconded by Counselor Studley. Discussion? This is number two. All those in favor? Moving on to number three, that we waived the development and building permit fees for garden and secondary suites, which again is trying to get some incentive into the community here to create. And so looking at the long-term benefit, we'll tax them. So it wouldn't be totally giveaway to waive that building permit fees. All right.
The mayor, just recording, recalling from the conversation today, there was a suggestion of a time limit identified.
Yeah. For a period of.
Three years.
How long would you like to limit it? Let's see that modification.
I think two years.
Two years that we revisit in two years?
I say two.
Two years. Okay. So the motion then to be made here, if someone would like to make it, would be to waive the development building fees for garden and secondary suites in the city for a period of two years. Counselor Corle, Counselor Maslin makes the motion, seconded.
Just a question. I think staff needs to know it's effective when.
It would be effective immediately.
Okay. Just so that.
Effective immediately.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Well, hopefully that will incentivize some people to make use of that opportunity. Okay. The next item of business is procurement. And I'm assuming we have some presentation on this from our CFO. Julia? And why would you do that?
Because of something I remember from my life.
So we're going to. Council wants to make a motion to that.
Yeah. But there was a rationale behind deferring it or something. It's been a long day.
The chit chats are getting out of control here. What are we looking for here? Council approves the procurement. Can I hear from our CFO?
Mr. Mayor, so this policy was brought forward last month in the committee of the whole and bringing it forward right now for approval. There was one, there were some issues that came up or some questions that came up during committee of the whole. One of them was with respect to five-year contracts. I mean, I can answer a little bit to that, that there's, that one of the reasons, you know, that we're requesting five years is the costs that's involved. And sometimes there can be a benefit in the pricing that the city would get if a supplier knows that they're going to have a contract for five years. As a matter of practice, I've talked to the manager of operations and he, they don't have, they haven't ever entered into any contracts that have been for five years. They've been, say, four plus one, four with an option for one more, or three with an option for two more. And myself, with the contracts I have, they've been three years or three years plus two. So that was one thing that question had arisen about. And then there was a minor thing on the first page just to reference the chief financial officer's review and approve of sole and single source procurement to refer it to section eight. So.
Right. And Counselor Krog?
That's what I was referring to.
Pay attention here. I think you're right. So it's maybe a deferral situation is what you're saying? Maybe better to, again, defer this item?
That's what I thought, but through you, to the people behind me. I thought there that it was because of that responsibility or that approval for sole source purchases. I thought there was, sorry.
I think.
I hate to be scattered, but I thought that that was a thing this morning that maybe we should defer.
So you make that motion?
Well, I don't know if I'm right.
Don't get panicky on that.
Or defer.
Yes.
You can always go and watch lessons.
I can watch. Can I have a seconder for the deferral? Counselor Zelinski. Motion to defer. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Julia. We're deferring this one until, we didn't name a date, so it's indefinite, but I'm assuming until four. On September 30th?
I thought that's what the date was.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to deal with it on September 30th. Thank you. Audit services for the year. Council approves entering into a contract with Birch for audit services for the 19 and 20 fiscal years. Can I have that motion? Counselor Thompson. Seconded, Counselor Corle. Any questions on this? All those in favor? And this was to make them the audit service. Now, the next motion is that they would be our auditors for 19, 20. Can I have that motion? Counselor Corle. Counselor Thompson, second.
Okay.
Okay.
It's been a long day.
All right. You've read the report on it. We're not going out to source on this at this point. This is a trusted company. And I'll ask for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Information item, the financial report for quarter two and 2019. And I pass to our CFO.
Is this working properly?
Is it making low battery?
Okay. So these are the financials for the first half of the year. Report our financials on essentially a count basis rather than an accrual basis. So it won't be 100% respective of actual expenditures or revenues. We have, our tax revenues are reported as their, as the tax notices are prepared in May. So we have the full year's worth of tax revenues included here. And if there are any changes to it, it'll be the result of supplementary tax assessments. Cost of purchased electricity is only reflects five months of the year, so it'll, it's, it'll be at 50%. We spent, we've actually been invoiced for 1.5 million in capital expenditures and then there's another almost 1.2 million of purchase orders outstanding that have been issued that haven't been invoiced yet. And during, during the second quarter, we did retire one of our loans and that was for the Ruckworth Station. So we, that will be one more payment, payments of $10,000 a year that we won't need to be making anymore. And we have some good news here. We received a one-time payment of $230,000 because the federal gas tax, they gave us how, 50% or, or sorry, the full amount of our last year's payment. So, but they actually did reduce our annual contribution amount. So we're a little bit under budget on 2019, but we do have this extra 231,000.
That's it. Council, questions? This is an information item.
Yes, Your Worship, through you, to the chief financial officer. Other capital grants. Could you explain what that's for?
Through, through the mayor, that's about 15 million or so is actually the DMAT grant. And I.
We haven't received that though.
No, but it's budgeted. That's a budgeted amount. And then there's some, the wastewater treatment plant, that's capital grant too.
Further questions? Comment? And receipt for information. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corle, all those in favor. Thank you very much.
Remember, don't know how to use their hands.
Great. The next item is Flitton Fund Gymnastics. And this is a letter regarding a multi-purpose location. So if I understand this correctly, the opponents here have financial arrangements. They're looking for the city to identify a location where they might own or lease long-term and go ahead with this kind of facility. Comments? Input from Counselor? Counselor Thompson?
My understanding is that they want to have some land on which they can build a structure because of the needs of particularly gymnastics. I think it's something like a 20-foot ceiling that they need in order to, yeah, becoming gymnasts to do their gymnastics. And there's also other organizations that would make use of this facility. I know that there's a community center in the plan, but I don't think that's going to be adequate and to meet the needs of these kinds of organizations that are specialized. So I guess, they're going to need, need to know in a relatively short order if there is a location within the city that could be, I would provide it to, for this type of facility to be constructed. And one of the places that I thought was between the curling rink and the aquatic center, there's that, I don't think that that's used for anything.
Yes. That.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the ideas was to from the group in the presentation by the, by the learning garden, like with the outdoor gym, something like that in that area on the side of the pool. Or one of the lots that council has on 70th Avenue as an option. I would recommend to get council to instruct staff to work with the group on the eventual options.
I think that's what Counselor Thompson's motion was about to be.
That's exactly what my motion was about to be. I make that motion.
Seconder for that, Counselor Corle. Further discussion? I'm impressed with the enthusiasm. I think that we need to reward that and see, it'll be quite the project.
Yeah. I think it's awesome, worthwhile. But my understanding is that the group that is working towards the community center was looking at that same location.
By the curling rink?
No.
Yeah. Okay. They changed.
Well, there are locations that they're looking at, but I think that it would be coordinated with what they're using.
And I guess part of, part of the work that staff would do in a situation like this with the group, work with the RDKV, Brett, like Donna, you know, somebody to figure out what could work.
Yeah. Thank you. And I understand one of the investors might be Brett Michaels. Is that true?
He did refer us to his charity website.
We'll name it after him. Let him know.
Okay. Motion on the floor is that we instruct cast, staff to work with the group to look at what are the cost priorities? All those in favor? And Community Trails Society, this is relation to the Coal Shoot Road, Coal Shoot to, how do you define it?
Coal Shoot to Highway Three.
Coal Shoot to Highway Two. So there is some concern at this point with the trails society's fear at this point that there may not be access through the property. So you have the letter from the trails society. I know that we're aware of this. Counselor Thompson, pardon, I forget people's names. Counselor Maslin and I have both spoken to management staff about our concerns on that trail from day one of our election. And so I'm not sure what else at this point tonight that we can do about it other than to flag it as a concern and to support the concern of the trails society with that access. Counselor Thompson?
I'd also like to suggest that the property owners be approached to see if it's feasible to put the registered ready weight against the property. I think there would be an objection to that and perhaps working with them. And that, I would make that as a resolution.
Okay. So to look at the option of working with the owner of the property to determine if there's some desire there to make the trail accessible. Seconder for that? Not hearing one? Yes. Counselor Corle. Further comment?
Hey, yes, Your Worship. You know, as somebody who's really been connected to this trail for many, many years, I know that it is kind of a scary moment. I would rather we not set a specific easement or try to or register a specific route or easement because we do not know the shape of any future development. Granted, I would sure like to see a trail follow this route from Coal Shoot to Highway Three, but it doesn't have to be a straight line. Okay. You know, it could go around corners, all that sort of thing. Because the intent is not to block the development, but rather to support the new property owners in seeking a formal recognition of the trail as they finalize their plans for the property. So I would, I'd like to see both the trails society and the owners work it out. That is, can they do so? I believe that the trail will be an asset to develop, that the city will support that development any way it can. But I, I'm, we opposed to the motion in any way that we would like to go ahead and try to pin down the actual location of the trail.
So I can restate the motion, Counselor? I'm a little confused here.
The last paragraph from the trails society reads as follows. As Grand Forks is embarking itself, or branding itself, pardon me, as the second capital will be seen, it is key to ensure that this short but important section of the trail remains accessible. We call on you to take whatever steps necessary to. We call on you to take whatever steps necessary to register this easement as a legal right-of-way and support new property owners in seeking a formal recognition of the trail as they finalize their plans for the property. Thus, I put forward the motion that I thought was being requested in the letter.
That the city be the person who steps forward to work that out with the land.
That's my interpretation.
Not throwing it back to the Trail Society, but having the city take a prominent role here. Counsel Moeslin, you still object to that? I don't think.
No, your worship, I don't object to that. It's probably more fitting and more within the capacity of the city to do that than it is for the Trail Society to do it. But again, really, it has to be a very, I believe it has to be a cooperative thing.
Right.
So that development can go forward. We certainly would love to see those lands develop.
Yeah. Further on this motion that's on the floor? Counsel Thompson?
Just further, that if the property owners are receptive to this, I am sure that they, and staff would be more than willing to work with the Trail Society to ensure that, that, that they are all working together for the same end.
Right. Okay, ready for the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, carry. The next one is a good news. Congratulations from Heather from Chilowack in the quality of our campground attended. So, thank you very much, Heather. Moving down to bylaws. The first bylaw that we're dealing with this evening is the proposed rezoning R1 to R2, 2880 75th Avenue. The. This is the, behind the Purley School. Is it Purley, yes?
I don't.
Hutton.
Hutton. Counsel is being asked to approve the variance request on the rear yard setback as motion number one. Motion number two gives fourth reading because there were some MOT things that had to be worked out on this. So can we have motion number one as a motion? Counsel Corlech, Counsel Studley. This is the setback, all those in favor? Opposed? We're gonna have to revote, I didn't see. You weren't ready for that, you were sleeping? Okay. This is, this is the development that we've already given readings to? Right, so this is.
The one with the garden suite that we don't have.
This is the six meter to 2.7 lot two. So asking again, counsel approves the variance, all those in favor? Carry. The second one is that counsel give fourth reading to the zoning bylaw amendment. So this would bring it back to a coming council meeting.
No, no, that, that's the final reading. Yeah. MOTI gave their.
Fourth reading, oh, it's final, okay, fourth and final reading. Counsel gives fourth and final reading to this amendment by law. Question? Can I have a mover on this? Counsel Thompson, Counsel Studley. Discussion? This is recommended by planning. All those in favor? Opposed, carry. Okay, and the next bylaw issue is the. Counsel gives first, second, first and second reading to the bylaw. This is the one we discussed again this morning, the motel. So can I have a motion for first and second reading of the zoning bylaw? Counsel Thompson, Counsel Corlech. All those in favor? And the second one, that we waived the $1,000 rezoning application fee. And the rationale here is this flood affected and. And a motion for number two. Counsel Corlech, Counsel Krog. All those in favor? Carry. And this is to, the third one is counsel direct staff to move forward with the legislative requirements for the rezoning. So this would be to a public hearing. And a motion for that, Counsel Thompson, Counsel Corlech, all those in favor? I'm sorry, Counsel Moeslin, you were gonna speak.
Yeah, your worship, I, I was going to, I just had a question since we're referring it to staff. I didn't have a chance to talk to, to Mr. Reed about the property. If we go forward to the map, if we go forward to the Google map, this is actually a very beautiful piece of property that has a, yeah, go right to the Google map. There you are. It's got a beautiful little beach on it. Okay, and those five properties, those five buildings there, you see, were pretty badly impacted by flooding. We're not able to bring anything, the DMAT grant didn't do anything for these folks. And I really would like to see something for this besides the $1,000. My question to staff is, my question to staff this morning was, who owns the green lawn in front of that property? Who does that belong to?
Highways, I would guess.
Well, then, does highways own the right, the old road down to the river? That's where the Pooh Bridge is, by the way.
Can we find that out for you?
Yeah, please, since we're instructing staff to go ahead. Can we put that on their list of to-dos?
As part of the legislative requirements for rezonings?
Yeah, well, whose property is it that we're trying to rezon? I understand that we're trying to rezon the subject property. But my question is that land right in front of it? And can it, does it have any potential?
So we have passed all three of those motions.
For a few seconds, we'll have an answer for you.
Oh, you're looking at the RDKB, son.
Lee, planning to speak on this, this particular motion? Or this decision that counsel they've already made? Thanks for.
Sorry, I'm slow on my app.
Well, we discussed it this morning at committee, the whole, so not getting into repetition. Thank you, Lee. All right, and. Oh, sorry, we have an answer to that question.
I'll just talk about. Yes, it's crowned, there's no title on that land. Including that side road to. That's correct.
Including the side road to the river?
That's the old highway.
It is the old highway, okay.
What a great entranceway to the new Cross.
So can, can we apply to the ground for that land?
Yeah, let's get it.
Well, if I think I know where things are, that would judge our investigations on Crown Land. Shh, I don't work.
Okay, we all.
Okay, let's, let's short circuit this. Can we, can we ask for more information on, on the, on that piece of property? It may or may not be an attractive thing. We're looking at superfluous property and valuable property.
Potential.
Let's see if it's a strategic move.
Yeah, wait.
We now have, our CFO has arranged our finances, so we can make strategic purchase. That's true. Okay. All right, getting down. This last item is the Roxall Inc. license of occupation, city-owned land. We're raising the rent, as you can see.
That was, that's just the release from encamera, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's.
So that's just for information purposes, so we can.
Okay, we already did that.
Yep.
All right.
We're done.
We're done. And back to the questions from the public in gallery. Are there any comments or questions on anything that occurred tonight from the gallery? It starts with.
Sorry, Les, I'll be quick. I just wanna thank mayor and counsel and city staff for considering our letter and our presentation and our proposal. It gives us good motivation and momentum to keep going forward to entering into discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Les?
I'm not sure if it's really a question, more of a comment. In the back and forth between counselors and Graham, there was mention that the possibility was that if you guys played with formula, the money could go away, which left the door open to, well, don't we have the money? Or do we not have the money? And I'm sure a lot of the people who are worried about their bylaws might be wondering, what does that mean? What do you mean, we don't have the money? What's that mean? So I'm curious if you could, you know, lay their theories a little bit on that.
Counsel Thompson will answer that.
Yes, I asked a question, actually, I think I asked it during our strategic funding session that we had as a counsel, that, that if, if counsel decided or made a resolution to change the parameters of the grant, that, and I'm gonna pick on North Russell's, that we weren't gonna buy all of the properties, but only some of them, then the grant applica, excuse me, the grant, the approval of the grant was based by due diligence on the senior government's level that supported the accompanying documents for the grant. And so my biggest fear is that I don't want to jeopardize.
Someone playing English, we either do what we said we were gonna do or we might not get what they said.
That's my understanding.
Well, I think, to the, the grant's not one big chunk, although there are interrelated pieces. There's nine or so different projects. And so there may be some room for, for minor changes within various projects, again, but the.
Nothing major.
But if it is major enough, there is a risk factor. Graham?
So there's just the main, the main, I guess, point of emphasis is that risk reduction as a whole is, must be maintained for the funding to be whole. And so, so if there's, it's basically a package that was integrated in risk management. And so there's, there's caution proceeding with analysis and due diligence, of course.
Okay, all right, did we, Les?
I hope so, I mean, I'm, I'm just basically trying to get you guys to speak in English about this to people who, no, really, when, when you're, when you're really worried about things, you're emotionally charged, your ability to actually parse reasonable logic and do math is really severely compromised. And when you give me an answer like that, I may understand it, but I'm not facing the conditions that these people are. So in plain language, as long as we live up to what we said we're gonna do, we'll probably get the money we said we're gonna get, we don't have it yet. It's not in our bank account or anything, but it's coming.
That's a good summary.
That was it, okay, thank you.
That's it? Yeah, oh, we forgot to meet you. You blend in so well.
Graham mentioned a letter of intent with the grant, is that possible?
We're signing a letter of our contribution. Our, it's the participation agreement. They're consulting with.
Well, it's senior levels of government are dealing with, so I don't know if we, as, as the counsel could authorize release that at this time.
Okay, what is it?
Sorry, it's the short, the short version of our little sidebar is, yeah, the initial letter announcing the award from, from the federal minister would be publicly available. The one that gets into details on actual spending is part of this contribution agreement that Graham was talking about. And because that's still being worked out, there's no final document ready to go on that yet.
Wouldn't the federal, or the senior levels of government have to approve the release of, of that?
I think the initial letter that we got was a, was a release.
Yeah, public document.
I think that was public already, yeah.
We didn't know that was public, but I think what you were asking for was.
The contribution part, once signed, would have to be agreed to by them as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's been a long, long day. Thank you all very much. Motion to adjourn. Counsel Krog.